Councilman Squill, thank you for joining us. We like the look there. It looks pretty good. Oh, we gotta get you unmuted. There we go.
I liked it so much, they took my face off the screen. There you go. Thank you. It's a pleasure being here. I'm not sure I like it, but it's beach shaven. And so for the time being, until this quarantine's up, I think I'll keep it and then get rid of it once we get back into personal appearances. But I'm happy to be here during these challenging times. I'm sure everybody's struggling through this, but happy to work with you and see how we could help as we work through this crisis.
So how are you and your family making out with all this being on lockdown? How's it going?
Good. I mean, I'm still, I go into City Hall every other day. So there's nobody in there. It's kind of safer there. My, I have two daughters and a wife who's a nurse. They're nurses. So if anything, it's safer to be out than in the house. But, you know, we make do. Everybody's healthy still. So everybody's doing well. And, you know, one day at a time and figuring out ways to get back to some type of normality during this crisis and working on ways to think outside the box of how we could look at things in a different light. And, you know, maybe looking to improve things as we work through this crisis.
Well, please extend our appreciation to your wife and you have another daughter who works in healthcare as well?
Yeah, two daughter nurses and my wife.
Geez Louise, public servants all the way around. Well, please say thank you to them and hopefully they're staying in good health and hopefully their minds are are good. It's a pretty stressful job at this point in time. It's amazing how things shift as people's perspective about, you know, who's on the front lines and their value and and the roles that they play in helping us all stay safe and and healthy. So you were talking about city council and your office. How is your staff making out? And how how are they going forward with their their work?
Good. Everybody is working from home right now periodically. A person will go into the office during the week. But we answer our emails, answer the phones if we're in there, if we're not in there. We take the messages off every half hour. So we're still in dialogue and we don't have any away messages on our emails. So people still have concerns and complaints that they have to be dealt with. And, you know, we still do them with the departments that are functioning within the city. So we're still moving right along. You know, the budget is the challenge right now. You know, the mayor prepared a new budget on May 1st. And now it's up to us to look through that budget and see what changes we can make to be less impactful on not only the services that are provided, but the impact of possible proposed tax increases. There's not a big appetite on council for that right now, but as we work through the budget, we'll see where we can maybe come up with those additional resources.
So let's take a step back. Some of our folks here on the chat right now may not be totally familiar with you. They may have heard your name. Let's go back to how long have you been in city council? How many terms have you had?
Well, right now I just started my third term in January. So that I'm in eight years. I'm in my ninth year now. Every year has been a little different. This this year started off as looking like it was going to be an easy budget cycle with no tax increases and a bunch of new services being provided. And then the crisis hit, which changed the proposed budget in March to from having an excess of dollars that we were going to help fund for our rainy day fund to, you know, now a shortfall of up to four to $500 million that we have to make up. So this is going to be a challenging year. But, you know, as you as you work through this, we're up to the challenge and we're gonna have to make tough decisions on our way moving forward. But I think hopefully it'd be better for the residents of the city.
So you had a full head of hair when the year started out, right?
Yeah, I didn't have a beard, that's for sure.
So you're district councilman. Can you tell us about your area that you cover within the city?
Yeah, there's 10 district councils in the city of Philadelphia. The first district, my my district goes east of Broad Street. So from South Philadelphia, from east of Broad to the river, all the way up through Center City, goes up into Chinatown and then to Spring Garden Street. But then, once it gets north of Spring Garden, from Third Street North, it goes up to Brown Street, goes so includes Northern Liberties there, goes to Second up to Gerard, goes into Fishtown along the river, and then goes to Kensington, Port Richmond, and the Harrogate areas.
Okay, so that's a really good little outline. Hopefully you guys were drawing a map in your head and kind of visualizing all of those different streets and those kind of landmarks. How is a district office different from an at-large office?
Well, the district offices are mainly concerned, the focus is on those boundaries which encompasses their district. You know, how how your the citywide legislation affects your district. Those are the only people who could vote for you, the people within that district. So if you live outside those boundaries, you might not like something I do, but you can't vote for me or for me or against me. Council at large is citywide. Citywide at large candidates run, basically, everybody in the city gets an opportunity to vote for them. The city council district members get the chance to weigh in on legislation pertaining to their district, especially zoning, introduce legislation that deals specifically with their district. All zoning letters, any appeals or variances have to go through an RCO process. We then has to go through a letter from the council office to the ZBA. So the council district offices are more involved basically in development than an at-large person would be. We deal with specific issues pertaining to our geographic boundaries.
So you guys get your hands dirty in a lot of different stuff. You got really, really like narrowed in as opposed to at large where, you know, they're kind of floating up here a little bit. You guys are really down, close to the, you know, you're right on the street level. Can you tell us a little bit about your team and the experience that you guys have with dealing with those sorts of things? Because, you know, it's not a place for the weak of knees or the faint of heart.
Yeah, especially my district. We have a very active RCO groups, registered community organizations. Anybody who's been in development knows that if you're getting a variance, you have to go meet with a community group first. And then they have their input. And then some of our groups are very, very engaged and can be really, you know, passionate, is a good word, I guess, about their work and how they stand up for their communities. So we try to gauge the benefit of a good development with the sometimes hard approach of an RCO on what they expect. It's, we go to a lot of meetings. We are at a lot of RCO meetings. So if you think about that, my district, every bit of it is covered by an RCO, different RCOs. Sometimes they overlap each other from Whitman to Pensport to Queen Village, Bella Vista, Columbus, Cap, Pashunk Square, East Pashunk, and then you go into Center City, Northern Liberties, Fishtown areas, Harrogate, Port Richmond. They all have very strong RCOs. So we get inundated with questions and concerns from those folks. And, you know, whether it's Society Hill or Harrogate, they might seem to have different issues, but they're very passionate about those issues that we have to deal with. So during the RCO process with a variance per se, they get to have the meeting. They send a letter to us and to the ZBA. And then we also then, most of the time, go along with the RCO and work with them and the developer to try to get the best possible project for their for their communities.
Okay. And then what's your team like? How many people you have on your?
We have six people who work in my office. My chief of staff, Ann Kelly, is a person who runs the office. Basically, I ask her what we should do and how to do it. She does a really good job. And our main focus in our staff is constituent services. Knowing coming from a background of community activism, I know how important it is to be able to get back to people who reach out to us. So whether it's a call to any of our staffers, we have five other staffers in the office. Sean McMonigle does our legislation and Marie Barron does most of our zoning letters. And the others, Leo, Rhonda, Steve, and Jen, deal with constituent services. Steve will deal a lot with the parking authority issues. And the rest deal with everything else. So it gets a little overwhelming at times in there. And there's a lot of questions, you know, especially with revenue and OPA, when people are appealing their taxes and things like that. So we always say no, no question is too small and nothing is too large. If somebody reaches out to us, whether through email or leaving a message or a call, we want to make sure we get back to them with a response or an answer to try to help resolve their issues. It's very, you know, sometimes it seems trivial to us when we hear all these problems that people have. And but if it takes, if they take enough of their time to call and reach out to us, we know it's serious to them. So we take it serious and try to get those answers resolved through our office. And we have a policy within 24 hours to get back to folks, no matter what the email is. I myself will do that even when emailed directly to me. So we take, our office takes those questions and concerns, whether it's a pothole, a streetlight that's out, or whether it's an idea on new legislation, or whether it's a complaint about, you know, the tax abatement or real estate taxes or assessment issues. We we take them all seriously and we try to come up with a response that will hopefully benefit the person who was asking.
Okay, so folks, our attendees here on this conversation, keep dropping your questions into the chat box. We will weave them into the conversation here. So please feel free to go ahead and do that. We know we have a few folks who have already done so. So, all right, with this new norm, you guys tried to do a council session last week with the modified budget from the from the mayor. How did that go? How was the virtual city council session?
It was okay. It went through. We got it done. You know, we're only sticking to COVID-related legislation right now and resolutions. So it's it's something that we know we'll have to do in the future. It's not conducive to getting work done and lobbying and talking to other council members to try to do that work that we normally do during a council session and in the caucus room before we go into council. So it's a lot different. It's a lot different even for lobbyists and people to find out what's going on and have your ear on the ground because, you know, it doesn't seem to be as transparent and and open. But I think what we'll learn is through this process is we'll probably get to some form of a hybrid type council session. We will have people in council and other people can join virtually if they want. That's where I envision it going. It hasn't been decided yet. We know the next couple ones will probably be through, this one has been canceled on Thursday, but next session will probably be virtual also. And then our biggest challenge is our budget. We have to have budget hearings and a decision before the end of June. That budget has to be finalized before we even know if if we're going to get money from the federal government or, you know, what the state budget looks like. So we're gonna have to make these decisions before then because if we don't have it by June 30th, we can't spend any money after that. So that's it's gonna be a challenge for us this year. So we're gonna probably do some of those hearings virtually, maybe doing some in in council. But the idea is to keep people safe as we move through the process of doing work. We can't stop. We can't just wait for this to go back to normal because there is not going to be a normal anymore. It's gonna be a new normal. And so we have to figure out ways to do things and how we move forward under this new way of doing things.
So you just mentioned the timeline as it relates to the state and the feds. What is the timeline for the federal government to possibly getting money into Philadelphia? Do you have any idea about that yet?
We met with, we met with our congressional leaders yesterday. A council member, Brendan Boyle, Mary Gay Scanlon, and Dwight Evans. And we're meeting tomorrow with Toomey and Casey. So they don't have a timeline of when the next stimulus package will come out, but they say there will be one. And we're hoping that that one will include dollars directly to municipalities. If that's the case, we can make changes based on that if we know it by the time we're doing it. Obviously, you have to have a budget. It has to be a balanced budget. We can't just fudge the numbers because the projections that are put into the budget are done by the budget director, Rob Debo. We have to go by those projections. So we have to make sure our budget is balanced and we can't leave an unbalanced budget come time June 30th. You know, we might be able to sneak into July a little bit if we're if we're close to hearing something. You know, council members are willing to work and through the summer on this to make sure we have it right. Or we maybe have to amend the budget coming in the in the summer or the fall. The only problem is after June 30th, you cannot do anything to change the tax rolls. So you can't increase taxes, decrease taxes, or anything after June 30th. We could do other things as far as making cuts and stuff like that. But as far as revenue generations and things like that, we have to have that decided by June 30th.
Okay, so but is that is that something that's being considered? Or is that just a possibility that you guys could do something and amend the budget? Are you just considering all options, all options?
Everything's, everything's on the table right now. And the president set up a working group of folks, council members to to look at ways of maybe doing this differently. I think, you know, if we're going to be successful, we have to think outside the box and looking at new ways to do things. We can't say we always did this for the last 30 years, so we're gonna continue to do it. I think those days are done. And, you know, the working group consists of the Chair of Law and Government, the Appropriations Committee, Finance Committee, Commerce and Economic Development. And so there's a five or six of us that are involved in this to come up with how to do the budget and how to then look forward to opening up the economy to generate money. Because even our projections, they seem pretty high knowing that as business comes back, how does it come back? And if there is a spike in the fall or winter, what does that look like? I don't think we go back to a shutdown again. I think we need to think of operating in these type of crises with maybe physical distancing and PPP, PPEs. So we have to look and work with businesses now to come up with ways that they could operate under this new norm.
Okay, so we're just gonna check in with the Chief Clerk, Michael Decker's office because we might have a sunshine law violation as Councilman Dom has jumped into the the chat room here. So I'm kidding around, guys, just kidding around. Welcome, Councilman Dom. We're pleased to have you in here.
Hey, Alan.
One of our GPAR members. So thank you very much, Councilman, for for hopping in with us today.
I just want you to know that you have one of the best council people today in Councilman Squill. Does a tremendous job, great mentor for me, and he's been a tremendous help to the city and his district, realtors, business, everybody. Does a great job.
And I want to say, by the way, Alan is also on that working committee for the budget. And he's been, you know, a great person who understands the businesses more so than anybody else on council that's really helped and guided us as we make these decisions. And they're all going to be tough decisions.
There we go. We just heard it from a veteran councilman giving praise to another one for his business acumen. So thank you very much for those compliments for the councilman. All right, so we've been talking about it already. You've touched on a few times. Mayor Kenny put in his his budget and it's calling for property tax increase. What are your thoughts about that budget? Councilman Squill.
Hold on one second. Hold on.
Here we go. This is live stuff, folks. Remember, keep your keep your questions coming into the chat box and we will get them into the mix here as we continue this conversation.
Sorry about that, Matt.
That's okay.
What was that question?
So you already had touched upon this in a bigger sense, overarching sense. We were talking about Mayor Kenny's budget. It came down last week. He's looking to increase some taxes. Particularly what's interesting to us is on the real estate part of things. What are your thoughts about this budget that he has proposed?
Well, I mean, it's a challenge, right? Understanding he only had the short time to come up with the budget changes, trying to fill a gap of four to $500 million. So it's, you know, a major challenge for them. And we know that there's severe cuts throughout the departments. There's some, some departments have been zeroed out altogether. And there's also some tax increases that were put in. And, you know, we have some ideas in this working group, including Alan. You know, we're gonna come up with other ideas of how how to balance the budget and, you know, understanding the cuts. And that's why it's so important to understand if the federal government is going to have some money for the municipalities. Because if it is, we can look at it differently, you know. And again, everything is on the table, whether we look at how departments function to, if there's something that the city, assets that we could use for the city to balance the budget in that realm. And again, Councilman Dom, myself, and several other council members in the working group feel like we need to throw everything on the table at this point and put a bunch of stuff out there to see if we could get something that nine members of council could agree on to move forward. There's nothing, no big changes that we've made yet to the budget, but there will be significant changes as as we move forward.
What do you mean by some departments getting zeroed out or close to zeroing out? What does that mean?
The department of, I mean, they cut their budget, so they will no longer be in existence. Departments of Art and Culture, the City Reps Office, just for two. Everybody else did a 20% cut across the board. There were some departments that seemed to not have the cuts. So I know there'll be some layoffs as part of that, but as part of the administration budget. So, you know, we were taking this very seriously in that there's people's lives at stake. There's, you know, businesses that have to to be able to come back online. You know, how can we expect people to pay more in taxes and have less income? You know, these are, these are difficult things that we have to look at. And I think by putting our collective heads together, we'll come up with something that, you know, it's still gonna be painful for a lot of folks, including some city workers and the likes. But it's time, you know, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions moving forward. So as you see those cuts, you know, and whether there's 20% cuts across the board, there's still more spending in this year's budget than than, you know, previous year's budgets. So as we spoke with members of our working committee, we're looking at past budgets to see if we could get back to some of that level. And therefore, you know, the city services that are necessary keep functioning. But maybe some of the fat is gone and we don't have to get too much into the bone.
So going back to 2008, when the financial collapse happened, Mayor Nutter and his administration had to make some pretty, pretty tough cuts. If I remember correctly, it seemed like across the board, city departments were cut 10%. Can't hold me to that number, but I think it was somewhere around there. Has that budget and that approach been referenced by the administration? Or are you guys in council doing that? Because it's, you know, they're not exactly the same, but I think there are some, you know, things you can draw from that experience back 12 years ago.
Yeah, I mean, we have actually brought that up. I think that was only like 125 million, 128 million. Alan corrected me on that one. You know, now we're talking more like four to 500 million. So it is a comparison, but it's a little bit different. But our budget's a lot bigger now than it was then. And the problem now is that we don't know how our revenue stream will grow to offset the monies that we're going to be spending. Everything is a projection right now. And, you know, we think as a whole that the projections that we saw from the the finance director seemed a little high and that that could be so that our budget is balanced and that we have to say that we're going to make this much money coming in so we could balance our budget so that we can move forward at June 30th when we're supposed to do that. But it's similar, but it's been spoken about, but it's not, this is a far greater challenge to come up with four to 500 million in cuts. I mean, to do that just in cuts alone is very difficult in one year.
So you mentioned the budget is quite large compared to where it was in the past. And we know from various media accounts and just watching the budget process over the last few years, it's grown quite a bit in the last four years. Do we seem to have a spending problem or a revenue problem?
Absolutely.
What's the problem?
Problem, I think, I mean, our revenue has been coming in. Our tax collection has been greater. We have a lot more, a lot less delinquencies than we had in the past, so that we've done a better job through revenue and collections. I think we have a spending problem. I think we we spend too much. And, you know, if we look at our overtime costs and things like that, it's it's not good, you know. And of course, the more money you have, it's like even at home, right? You have a new job, you get a raise, you spend more money. The more money you have, the more you spend. And, you know, we had a rainy day fund and money away in that fund to to help us offset some down times, but it's not going to help us offset this. And so I think we have to seriously look at our spending and where that money goes and see if we could trim off the top initially. Again, I mean, you're you're talking $100 million extra in the budget over the last eight years. And it's a lot of money. So where can we look at where those expenditures come in and how we could cut before we ever look at trying to raise taxes?
It looks like Councilman Dom is chomping at the bit. Is that accurate assessment or are you just smiling?
No, I would say working with Councilman Squill. I got cut off, so I don't know what was said, but, you know, our budget did go up 1.1 billion over the last four years. I did, I spent about 16 hours this past weekend going over the budget line by line. And I think that if we could just look at 2019's expenses compared to 2021's estimated budget expenses, the delta is 120 million, which is what we need to close the gap without any increases in taxes or stopping any decreases in like burden and wage taxes. So we have this group. It's a great group. Councilman Squill and others are on the group along with me. And we'll get, we'll figure it out. And I think our goal, my personal goal, is no tax increase. In fact, I will say that I think, and I think Councilman Squill joins me in this. Our goal is not only no tax increase. Our goal is to figure out how to improve, take this crisis and make it better and improve our tax structure so that we can grow these businesses and help people in the city greater than we did before. And it might mean for us to invest in the tax system.
Okay, all right. So, Councilman, one question that came into the chat. How realistic is it to get things done by June 30th?
We have to.
Okay.
We're gonna have it done by then. Yeah, it's gonna be done and like it may have to be changed, but it'll it'll be done. June 30th or July 3rd, we'll be done.
All right, so let's shift gears a little bit. Let's get into real estate. What kind of concerns, Councilman Squill, do you have about the real estate industry as it relates to this crisis, the pandemic that we're going through? Is there anything that jumps out at you as an area of concern to you?
Oh, I think it's a challenge. It's, you know, looking at a lot of changes that happen in the city of Philadelphia when people can't afford to either pay a mortgage or pay rent. It's going to have an effect on on real estate. And then when the people can't pay rent, the people on the properties can't pay their loans. It's just a vicious cycle. So I believe there's going to be a negative impact on on real estate in just about any business unless you're a grocery store or some of these tech companies that are are capitalizing off of this. Every, every business in every sector is going to be affected and real estate is going to be one of them. You know, even business-wise, if you have a commercial office space, are people now working from home? Are they thinking about, you know, well, maybe I could do, I don't need as much office space anymore to bring people in. They could work from home. And that's scary for us for our wage tax purposes. If people live outside the city and usually come in the city and work, we collect the wage tax. But as people go through this crisis, they might realize certain things work better for them or they could do things maybe a little more economically. And so that affects real estate. You know, what is your square foot price? What is that going to go up or down? Are people going to give back some of their square footages that they have previously used? You know, and then that trickles down to the everyday citizen who's renting an apartment or buying a condo. You know, how much can they afford? And if you're not working, it's hard to get a loan. So these are, these are big challenges. All that's going to affect real estate. And does that end up then affecting the assessment values of the homes? We don't do a very good job with assessments right now, anyway. Hopefully, we'll take this time to fix how we assess properties from OPA. And I know we have a CANAS system up and running now. It's supposed to have better data to be able to. It's supposed to have better data to be able to uh assess our property citywide a lot better, but that's yet to be seen and. So these are going to be challenging times. I do see an effect and uh, I don't see it as a. I think it's gonna be a couple of years uh before we see real estate and moving back up.
So you mentioned O P A a moment ago. Um. Very still looking for uh the new head of O P A? Is that still the search on the way?
Yeah, that's still ongoing. Um. Mike Piper has left and so there's a void at the top. Uh, but they're still moving forward. They implemented the new canvas system. Um, something we've been waiting for for a long time. Um, not sure how quick and, you know, accurate this will be. Uh, we. You know, we've had inundated with challenges along the way with how we do assessments and, you know, there's been some legal challenges to that. Um. But I'm hoping um after this year, uh, which would be a year of no assessment increases till they figure it out. I'm worried about next year, do they come back when they reassess these properties? Um, you know, maybe at this point with the crisis, you won't see those big increases. Of assessed values going up, and maybe you'll see some of it going down, but the city does, you know. Need the revenue from real estate taxes and the schools uh need that revenue also, so. Um, it's going to be interesting to see how this crisis affects the assessment process and you guys are more experts than me and maybe Alan could tell me, but. Uh, is there a possibility that next year assessments would be less than than this year? I don't, I don't think so, but in the real world, would that be the case?
So you mentioned rents, you mentioned rents a short time ago. Uh, last week at the city council session, there was a package of bills introduced by Councilwoman uh Gim Brooks and Gothie, Gothie. Um, related to landlord tenant issues, stuff relating to evictions, um, rent freezes, things along those lines. Uh, you have any thoughts and impressions about those bills? Have you had a chance to look at them uh with your staff?
Yeah, we 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 reviewed the the bills in general. I I mean, honestly, during the crisis, everybody would be supportive, I would think of, you know. Uh, fees not being charged or to be able to not evict somebody during this crisis, but I I I think. You know, as the bill states now, it it sort of encapsulates everything into the bill. If you were under eviction process before, you would just still get another sixty to ninety days and. All these other things. I think it's a little overreaching. I think there needs to be a. Uh, a process and during our our council hearings, I would think the bills would be amended to also include. Um. That people who are under a previous eviction process would not be covered under the legislation to which I thought was intended. Initially to be just during the COVID crisis. Uh, that the fees would not be charged and the evictions would not move forward. Um, so. It's just a a little overreaching to encompass everything, I think. Um, and working with my colleagues, I I spoke with one of the sponsors, Councilmember Gim. That um, she was trying to get sponsors. I didn't co-sign the bills, uh, because I thought there were some challenges to. It was including too many folks in what we called the the crisis of the COVID. And uh, understanding there's people who are have been in the eviction process already, they. Should not be included in the crisis uh legislation, but and. There's still a lot more to learn about what the bill actually does and, you know, I think during the hearing process and input we have from. You know, some of our 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 partners out there and stakeholders as far as you guys and Hapco and some of the other folks. To see how it impacts landlords, because what what I said to some of our sponsors are that. Sometimes the intention to help folks, the unintended consequence can hurt them. If the people who rent to the people who are on the borderline or in need. Somehow changes their mind and then they only rent the people who have money, also increase the cost of rents. You could end up hurting those folks that you tried to help. Uh, so that's the challenge with these bills and to really understand the impact that they have and what they all do. It's going to take a little bit of time, and I think for working its way through the council process and having hearings will hopefully help us get to a point where. Um. It won't be a winner and a loser on this, that if you want to help both folks, you need to help the both the landlord or the and the tenant. Uh, so our goal was more, initially was more for rent assistance where. You help the people who can't afford it to pay rent, so therefore the landlord would get paid. And so much that now now they're a team, they're in it together and not where you're weighing one against the other. And I think sometimes our legislation picks winners and losers, and that's something we have to try to figure out during this group of bills that were introduced.
So adding to what uh, Councilman Squilla is talking about, uh, Councilman, they're most of the stuff that they also are seeking for, for example, uh, no evictions at the at this point of time or. Uh, no illegal lockouts or not even late fees. I think the current, the landlords are already doing it. Uh, they they are, they're landlords, lots of landlords are actually working with tenants to get stuff done. Uh, so now man eating it and coming up with the legislation for that is just overreaching, something like what uh, Councilman Dom came out with a resolution uh saying that. Uh, which was basically echoing what now Attorney General Josh Shapiro is talking about, like telling, asking, request, not. Requesting, but telling the landlords to make sure that you don't evict people right now. So it is something that the landlord tenants are already working on. They are, there are numerous examples of how landlords have actually had uh. My payment plans or, you know, agreements with tenants to make sure that they're they they they're not evicted or they're not they they're not left homeless. So those bills sort of are. Uh, overreaching in in a way that which what is already being done, but you're just mandating it and, you know, affecting the business for everyone.
Yeah, I agree. I know the people that we work with, I mean, whether it was a landlord or we called it a a bank for a loan. They, everyone we talked to worked with their tenants and were able to come up with an agreement between themselves, uh, and they've been great. I mean, do you have some bad? People out there? Absolutely, there's 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 some out there, but at the end. Um, the reason why I didn't sign on as a cosponsor was I, it just seemed a little far reaching and it. When you legislate things like this, you gotta look at what the intended consequences could be. And then I didn't know the answers at the time, because we really didn't have much time to review the legislation when it was introduced. Uh, so I think during this process, we could weed out. And try to make it not a winner and a loser, but how both the landlords and and tenants can benefit from something. Um, at the same time and that, you know, I don't know if this bill, these bills will ever do that, but I mean, it's it's worth having a conversation.
And so uh, just as point of background for our members, um. Both of the councilmen are aware of this, there's a real estate coalition, which is comprised of uh B I, B I A, Hapco. Um, the Apartments Association, and it's a coalition in that we all have some shared. Perspective and views on things as it relates to the real estate market in in Philadelphia, and we come at it from our different angles. And what we do is we just come together from time to time and we information share, talk about things that are going on in city council, things that we see that are going on within the industry. And see if there's any way that we could help advocate or champion for something. Um, or to see if there are any threats that um are to the industry and if there's a way that we could go ahead and. And amplify or better articulate a viewpoint on 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 the subject matter at hand. Earlier today, we had one of those uh meetings, Jack Malloy, who's the Chair of GPAR's Government Affairs Committee, Summer and myself, uh, were a part of that. And one of the interesting things that came out of that conversation was um, looking at rents coming in in April. Um. The amount of rents not paid was was about like one or two percent, which wasn't. Too horrible, and then they're saying that the rents coming in from May are actually trending pretty well too. It's a little bit early, because what, today is May? Sixth, um, so it's too early to give the full picture on that, but um, it. It showed that stimulus money was coming into the into the hands of renters. And that maybe they weren't paying exactly right on time on the on the uh, you know, first of the month. As the month played out, those numbers start to go up and up, so um, that was a very encouraging sign for them and also was showing that. The intent of the stimulus money that was going into the hands of of resident residents was going into, you know, into the landlord's hands. And as Summer mentioned, one of the things that they have been pushing very strong is that these are relationships and you have to talk. Tenants have to talk to landlords, landlords have to talk with their tenants. No one wants to go ahead and kick somebody out. And no one wants to go that do that during a a crisis like the one that we're under right now, so I think sometimes those those talking points get a little bit. Um, misconstrued and it and like we were talking about winners and losers, sometimes it's bad guys and good guys. And I don't think that it's necessarily fair the way that sometimes those characterizations uh happened. Unfortunately. That's what helps to get legislation passed or get people amped up, I think. Uh. So that's a little bit of Matt Braden commentary there, so sorry about that. Um. So, talking more about the real estate stuff, um, tenure tax abatement, where does that fit in with all this? Is this even the proper time to even have a conversation about that? Um, you know?
I didn't think, I didn't think it was the proper time to do it. I was thinking, you know, you do that after the budget and uh, but. Councilman Hean just passed around a resolution to extend the uh abatement for a year. So it wouldn't be. January twenty-one, it'd be January twenty-two. Uh, so he 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 passed it out. I don't know if you got any cosigners on there.
Um, is it a resolution or a bill?
It's a bill.
Yeah, so you're 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 the thought, maybe this isn't the right time, we need to focus on the budget.
I didn't think it was the right time to do it. I um. Uh, there's so much going on right now and then you create animosity when you don't need to do that. Let's try to fix what we have in front of us right now and then. You know, we have this fall, the summer to work on it and the fall to say, all right, let's see how these businesses are operating. Let's push back the abatement date or something like that, because the mayor already pushed back the bag ban, right? So we saw the bag ban, we saw he unilaterally did that, so it was already a precedent to do it. So then we could say, all right, now, you know what, we're not gonna be able to do this. Ellen and I have so many permits lined up, let's give them another six months to a year to catch up to all this stuff. And then this was my philosophy and then move the date, if you need to move the date, but. Uh. The legislation. May, I just hope it don't backfire and then people try to insert something into that to even change it, make it worse, you know? Uh, once you open up a can of worms, sometimes it's hard to get that lid back on it. Uh. Uh, but we'll see what happens and it's out there now, so I don't know where it's going to go. Alan, what do you have any ideas? Is he still on?
I I, yeah, I agree with you, Mark, and I I would, if we were gonna do it, maybe after the budget is passed. And maybe um, some smart person said to me, maybe we should couple it with ten or twelve other bills that are all gonna get extended because of the COVID experience. And it's a package of bills that get extended.
That's what I was thinking too. Uh, I I don't know, that came out of the blue. I didn't know if 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 Councilmember Hean had spoken to you about it, but uh.
Who was that smart person, Councilman?
Uh, I think it's somebody, somebody associated with GPAR. I don't remember who they were.
We'll we'll give Summer credit for that. Good job, Summer. All right, so this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna go inside this chat box, see if we can pick out some good questions from our folks. We're at. Uh, fifty-three minutes. Um. Want to be respectful of everybody's time. Um, there was a, someone said something about the drop program. Uh, get, you know, people love a crisis. Drop, drop, get uh thrown into the mix on this?
Yeah, I I don't know how that plays within the budget and. Right now, Alan, I thought, didn't we change the, but we changed the drop so it doesn't have a negative impact on the income of the, I mean, on the expenses of the city. Uh, I think we even capped it at a a certain rate. Um. I haven't heard that drop being discussed as part of the budget. Have you heard that, Alan?
I have not heard that either, and I think that would be. I, you know, we, I tried to introduce legislation, but we didn't have a pandemic and I was crucified. I think putting it in, the the impact of it for the people that are already exempted. You know, no newly elected official gets dropped, so. The impact right now is not as great. People hate it. I understand why they hate it, but I think there's other areas where we could save money.
Yeah, the drop program just seems to be one of those ones that, um.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's the, it's the whipping, it's the pinata, I guess.
Um, I mean, if it saved money for for um. I I have to look, I I don't even know what the expense to the city is on that. Um. I thought we zeroed out the liability for the city, but I'll have to check.
Um, you're getting some props, Councilman Squill, for your support of Asian American associations. Um. Nice comments.
Well, Chinatown and I have a lot of, uh, you know, big part of my district and, you know. They're suffering like through this like everybody else is and um, you know, we're, they're all hardworking people and uh, we have Washington Avenue. Uh, a lot of Asian businesses that are are there and our Asian arts programs. So it's an important aspect of the city of Philadelphia and we gotta continue to help grow, grow this um, uh, to make the city better.
So speaking of those communities, um. You know, is there any concern about uh discrimination and different things, uh, hate based against those um communities? Considering some of the rhetoric that has gone on as it relates to the virus and whatnot, have you heard of anything and? And is there something that the city uh is doing to abate those those kinds of things?
Yeah, council had introduced a resolution on that earlier, um, when the pandemic first started. I don't know if you remember, a couple council members and the mayor and some staff went over to Chinatown.
For lunch.
Uh, to support them, uh, letting them know that, you know, these are our citizens, they're Philadelphians just like we are, have nothing to do with anything else. Um, we support wholeheartedly, we, you know, we oppose any type of hatred or uh. Discrimination on any, any person. Uh, so we will continue that uh moving forward, but um. You know, we we believe as if as a city, we all need to work together to improve it and so at this point, um, council will. Continue to be deliberate on how they approach hate hate crimes and uh. Uh, picking on people for uh specific either gender or or race or religious bias, that it's not something that will be tolerated here in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection.
Very good, very good. Um. And remember, we all play a part in that too, right? When we hear people saying things, say something to them. Uh, because it's not always cool, it's not cool ever to to do that stuff. It's never cool, so, you know, some, but you know. You know, we have a responsibility, we have a responsibility when our friends say, you know, off color stuff, you know. That's where you can put a stop to stuff pretty quickly that way. So anyway, um. How do you guys factor into the budget? The potential for people making less money? How does that work? You know, we're going ahead, looking at potential Philadelphians having it to to take pay cuts. How does Rob DeBeau and that team put that into the mix when they are making these budget projections? Um.
Uh, they're all guesses, right? I mean, the projection is basically a guess and. Normally, you know, you have a three percent increase, a two and a half percent increase and you do a round budgetary. Uh, during and figuring out a a number of how much money will come in and, you know, we have a history to go by. This year is different. This year, we don't know, you know, how fast will businesses open, even if they do open, how many people will go there? You know, how much, you know, tax dollars will be generated? Do you do you get the same liquor by the drink tax as you did before? Do you get the same real estate tax? You know, do you get our wage tax if people aren't working? We we see a big hit now, people are still working, but they're not working in the city, they're not paying the Philadelphia wage tax. Um, you know, that adjustment is a guess, right? Even when they come back, are they all coming back? Um, you know, when when retail starts opening, our sales taxes, you know, is that gonna come back? How much does that come back? Uh. This is going to be probably the most challenging and that, you know, it's going to be a prediction of what revenue stream is going to look like. We look, I looked at the budget, I know Alan said he read the whole thing, I didn't do that, God bless him, but um. He uh. I'm sure he's seen the budget, the projections seem pretty high, um, of what revenue is going to come into the city, and like I said earlier, that could have been maybe based on. Trying to balance the budget off of something and try not to make as many cuts as as have to, but. Uh, I think it's a guess and we, but we have to go by according to our charter, we have to go by the budget director's projections on. Um, what our budget has to be, we have to balance it, and then we also have to have a five-year plan that is uh, has to be approved. Um, so Alan, you have anything to add on that?
No, I mean, I I think that on the salaries, I think the budget said one to seven percent cuts for city employees. And I think that uh, they may have to be bigger cuts, uh, but I think basically. But I think basically, if we can get our group, Mark, focused on what 2019 expenses were, we can eliminate this 4% increase in real estate taxes, which is really $70 million. I know the administration said it's 30, but 4% of 1.7 billion is $68 million. There's a $70 million real estate increase baked into that budget.
Alan, were they talking about just raising it on the one side? So is that a 4% on both sides? Or was it just a 2% and shifting the money to the school district?
It's 3.96% increase on the real estate tax. Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's 50 million between, I mean, here's the wrong messaging for us that we got to focus on. Let's tax people who live in the suburbs who want to work in the city a higher rate, they must stay out in the suburbs. Let's tax parking so they don't come in and shop. All those things are negatives. And in the reverse, it's like, we open a new restaurant after the pandemic, and you come in and the prices are higher. I mean, who's coming to the restaurant? Our prices should be lower to attract people to come in.
Yeah.
That's our challenge.
And listen, I've been hearing from my constituent base too, because they've been emailing me like crazy, saying, what are you doing? You know, and not that we proposed it, but, you know, you're going to raise taxes on people we can't pay. You're going to raise taxes on parking? Do you think that parking lots not going to raise the fees? But then if they raise the prices, nobody's parking in the lots anyway. When we see our revenue from the parking lots for the next several months, they're going to be pretty much down to zero. So again, yeah, it's a challenge, and I think we're up for it, and we will find, every year we find alternatives, and Alan, you were a big part of it last year, and I think this year, you know, we didn't, there was a, there was a big tax, real estate tax proposal last year, if you remember. And that didn't happen. So, you know, we'll, we'll see.
Here's the good news for real estate people, you know, I've told, and Mark, you've done the same, talked to different organizations. You talk to the bar association, they tell their problems. You talk to Realtors, you hear your issues. Then you talk to the restaurant people and say, oh my God, that's a nightmare. And then after that, you talk to the hotel people and say, oh my God, this is the worst. They're hoping to come back by 2022. And Mark, you sit on the convention board, you should talk about that, because all this is tied together. Everything ties together.
Even our convention business was, right? The convention center business, and look at how many shows have canceled, even out until November, December. So it's, it's not good. I mean, and so that's what's hard about projecting revenues too, future revenues. You have to know exactly what's happening, project the future revenue, and I don't think anybody really knows, unless you have a crystal ball, anybody really knows what's, what's going to happen even after the summer.
Yeah, you know, the exercise we need to do in government, and we'll do it, is the same exercise everyone on this call needs to do in their own business and their own personal life, and that is to look at every expense and categorize them one through five, and ask this question. If I eliminate this expense, what's the impact to the government? Or what's in, in your situation, what's the impact to my business? And once you have all the fives that have the least amount of impact, you start eliminating those. And if it's not enough, you go to the fours. The ones that have the most impact, you keep them, but that's the exercise we need to do in government. I did have, I'll tell you this, we have a commitment of confidentiality on this call, Matt, or what?
Sure.
I had a conference call with Bridget Greenwall Property, and I said to Bridget, I want you to tell JLL, who does our consulting, find us $5 to $7 million in your budget. In 48 hours, they found how we could save $5 to $7 million. So those kinds of things, we're going to have to work on in every department. It's the nickels and dimes, even though $5 million is not a nickel, but it's in a $5 billion budget, it is a nickel. But we got to find three, four, five, $2 million in every department to piece this together.
What about the land bank? Can the land bank play any role in all this? Or is that, I mean, it's probably not going to the budget this year, but I mean.
I mean, you think as far as dispersing properties or selling property?
One of our questions in here, how do we use the land bank better?
Well, I'll, I'll take that one. We're using assets right now, we're looking at assets with no commitment, on how do we leverage our assets to basically free up cash and value those assets? And I can't really talk too much about it, but we are looking at that right now.
Mentioned earlier about the city payroll and, and folks maybe taking cuts between 1% and 7%. I, I heard there's some, some sort of offer of giving folks administrative leave days or something like that. Is that accurate? If they're having to take a cut?
I think what they're doing is they're saying, if you get a 1% to 7% pay cut, you get three additional administrative days off.
That's bad. I wouldn't do that. Because you save that for vacation days, and then you cash it out the end, the city has to pay. So we're talking, we're really talking about pennies there, but.
That across the board, Alan, or just for the administrator? Because they can't do that with the unions.
No, non-exempt.
Non-exempt, right, okay.
All right, I think we've taken up enough of your time, we're at 4:05. This is a great conversation.
Can I inject one thing for Councilman Scola's benefit? You guys all should reach out to Councilman Scola and email him, and copy me, what three, four, or five things could we do to help in this situation, not just Realtors, but the economy in your opinion? Like what, what do you recommend we do? We're here to serve you, what can we do to help?
And I would agree, because I've been doing this with a lot of, we've been a lot of calls today with our business improvement districts and commercial carters, and I've been saying the same thing to them, is how do you think we could work with you to open your business, to get it open quicker, to, to be an advocate for business reopening, and understanding if we have to wait for the, our numbers to ever get to what they're supposed to be to open back up, then we're never going to get there. So we got to start thinking about, how do we open in the eyes of a pandemic? How do we get businesses back up and functioning? And then if this does happen again, if the crisis hits in the fall or the winter and it gets worse, we're still able to maintain that business function by using, whether it's physical distancing, less of our square footage, PPEs, and so forth. So whatever ideas you have, be happy to share with us, and we could share with our working group, and, and hopefully make that part of the budget, or make that a part of how business gets back to working again.
Councilman Scola, thank you very much. You always make yourself available to us. We've met with you many times, we've had tough conversations in the past, but you've always been very approachable, accessible, and honest with us, and we can't thank you enough for, for that again today. We really, really appreciate it. We may not always get the answer that we want, but we know we're going to get an honest answer from you. And that, at the end of the day, I think that that, that, that means a whole heck of a lot to be able to have that kind of discord, discourse with our elected officials. So we appreciate that. Councilman Dom, thanks for jumping in here, making a little guest appearance, we appreciate that. Everyone, drop your thoughts into the chat box before you get out of here, let us know your thoughts and opinions about today's session. So with that.
Thank you, guys. Hang in there and stay safe, everybody.
All right, you do the same. Take care.
Bye-bye.